All right, Mayor, we're good to go.
Okay.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of 2022 meeting dates was published in the Eastern Express Times and the Hundred and Democrat on February 17, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall. Action may now be taken. Please join me for the slide.
Barry.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Strange.
Here.
And Lee.
Here. No comments tonight. Motion to dispense with the reading of the February 24, 2022 regular minutes.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Motion to approve the February 24 regular minutes.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Okay, first up, we have proclamation 001-2022, proclamation in support of the people of Ukraine. Councilwoman Barry.
Whereas the sovereign nation of Ukraine has been invaded by military forces without cause, and whereas countless civilians and military personnel have been injured and killed by indiscriminate shelling and bombing, and whereas the invasion of Ukraine and attacks against its people have been broadly condemned by the U.S. President Joseph Biden, leadership of the European Union, Great Britain, and numerous other countries, and whereas hundreds of thousands of people around the world have marched in streets to condemn these acts of violence and to show their support for the Ukrainian people, and whereas Central Jersey has one of the largest Ukrainian communities in New Jersey, and whereas Ukrainians settled in Central Jersey in the first wave of mass immigration in the early 1900s, and whereas the largest immigration influx to Central Jersey came in after World War II as Ukrainian displaced persons wanted to find a new and safe, secure home, and whereas Hybridge Borough, Hutterton County, New Jersey, and its surrounding counties and states are home to a robust and thriving Ukrainian community, and whereas the people of Ukraine are experiencing pain, hardship, and grief due to the aggression of Eastern Europe. Now, therefore, we, mayor and council of the Borough of Hybridge, proclaim that the Borough of Hybridge stands in solidarity with our Ukrainian neighbors as well as the people of Ukraine as they bravely defend their country and their freedom and their lives. Thank you.
On to public comments. It is the policy of the Borough Council that all public comments on an issue shall be limited to three minutes per person. Comments may be made on any subject pertaining to Borough issues. Comments pertaining to public hearings should be saved for that section of the agenda. Each person may speak once during the public comment section. No debating between residents. Comments should be addressed to mayor and council through public microphone.
I'll go first. Colleen Henn, the D.C. Comastery. I had a whole prepared statement here ahead. Not going to use it. I'm going from the heart here. I am representing the Women for Hybridge. We are a newly formed organization in town, and we took over from the disbanded Women's Group, who has been holding events in this town for well over 20 years. And we would like to continue those events, some of which have been taken on by other organizations, the Events Committee, the Hybridge Business Association, and that's great, and we want to work with all of them, with all the events that we can, working together, and that includes with mayor and the council. So, my problem began when I went to the Borough as far as the townwide yard sale and the Easter egg hunt, which has been going on here for well over 20 years. I contacted Bonnie, the administrator. She sent me to Adam, the Borough clerk, and he sent me the all-too-familiar field usage application, which I was more than happy to fill out. As a matter of fact, I'm still waiting for one more signature on that, and that's from Chief Bartman. He also sent me an application for a peddler's permit, something of which I've never seen before. So, I did my homework, and I followed the ordinance that was on there, and I read through it, and I found out that in May of last year it was amended to add licensing fees and other verbiage. And it also stated in there that no one from Hybridge residents could sell wares or vend on private or public property. So, that to me reads that if I wanted to sell stuff for my home, like firewood or something like that, I couldn't do it without that peddler's permit. I also found out there were fees attached to it. Now, I'm hearing all kinds of numbers, anywhere from $100 to $250, and that my understanding is anybody who wants to participate in the townwide yard sale would have to get this permit and pay this fee. I reached out to Steve Strange, who I found out was a liaison for the Events Committee. I texted him back on February 22, and he said, "Well, maybe we can meet later this week. I would love to discuss it with you." I'm still waiting for that conversation to happen. All right. From there, looking over the paperwork, making sure I had everything in order, and it's all here, I went back to the meeting minutes, and I looked at the video, and when it came time for this ordinance to be adopted, there was only one comment made, and that was from the mayor, stating that it was going to make it easier for people to sell things in town. Well, from this, I can't see how it's going to be any easier.
Sorry, Colleen, that's the three minutes.
May I continue to finish this?
Finish your sentence, but we really have to adhere to it, unfortunately.
I'll finish for you. Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that you guys look at the resolution tonight regarding the townwide yard sale because it's incorrect, so it needs to be amended and corrected. And I would ask that you rescind the ordinance that you adopted back in 2021, and let there be discussion on it because it's really affecting a lot of people. And I want to work with you guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Sally Ward from Salatu Village. First, thank you, Natalie, for speaking so eloquently in behalf of how we all feel about the suffering of the Ukrainian people. On another matter, earlier this week, I attended a Board of Education meeting for the first time in my 26 years as a homeowner here. Sorry, probably can't hear me. After all this time, it finally sunk in that the school board, not our town council, does the school budget, and that well over half the dollars I pay annually in property taxes go to schools because of the budget the school board creates, not our council. So, I decided to meet them and see what they're doing. To my good fortune, a speech and slide presentation to our Hybridge Board of Edges given by the New Jersey School Boards Association. I learned a lot. One of their recommendations for all school boards was to require high-level curriculum that prepares students for global competitiveness. I've thought a lot about that particular statement, a lot, and I'm wondering if, and hoping that, somewhere in the curriculum, is the offering to our children of the practices of both winning competitions joyously and losing competitions graciously. These are two things I was taught both in grade school and at home, and because of that, sorry, I have all forms, because of that, there was no warping among competitors on or off the field. I can't help but think that if people like Mr. Putin and Mr. Trump had been taught to embrace these values, that maybe our world would not be in such turmoil today. I can't begin to fathom the degrees of pain, fear, and harm of the Ukrainian people today, and all at the hands of those whose lives are lived based on power, control, dominance, rigidity, stubbornness, and utter lack of empathetic concern for human life and love. I feel great, great sorrow for all who are suffering the whims of these barbaric individuals whose lives are based on their personal need to win over the needs for cooperation to achieve the collective well-being of all human kind. May we all, may we all learn to reject such cruelty. May we all learn both to win competitions joyously and lose any competition graciously. May all Ukrainian people soon return to their homes, and may we all help them quickly rebuild.
Thank you, Sally.
Hi, I'm Laura Bonner slash Gabriela Chavez, 79 Krieger. I spoke last week, or two weeks ago, on Zoom. I made it known about the peddler permit. I'm going to kind of hopefully do justice to the rest of what Colleen was saying. I was fortunate enough to have the conversations with Steve Strange. I did share a few of them with Colleen. You know, the conversation that could have ensued between the two of you, I'm not sure. I hope to have given a lot of communication. I had some conversations with Adam. I think at the end of the day, there is, or there are some changes that need to be made to the ordinances. I'm fortunate enough to have gotten the opportunity to start some businesses in Hybridge, continue some businesses. Right now, we are at St. Patrick's Day, and hopefully the bars are bumping. It's nice to be here and to have the opportunity to speak with everyone, but as a business owner, we really struggle, especially after COVID, having the opportunity to have a vendor market and be able to, more than just farmers' markets, have the retail, or the people to sell their retail. I don't think we realize that cottage laws are going to go into effect, and since they have, people need the opportunity to sell the things that they're making. Not only that, they make their wares at home, they knit. So, to have an exorbitant fee such as $45, $25 for a background check, and then another $35 seems extraordinary. Plus, as a business like myself, if I wanted to charge, to do $15 a person, allow the Women for Hybridge to get the opportunity to get donations for some of their events, it makes it really difficult for me to do so with a peddler permit that does not allow me to have any type of event that vendors sell their wares on private or public property. I've also found out that in the event that these are, you know, something that, if the peddler permit encapsulates everybody, then that would mean someone wouldn't be able to have a lemonade stand at their home. They wouldn't be able to have a garage sale, which I've read. I have several amounts of statements from business owners and community members who are of the same mindset as me. I don't think that they should be subject to a background check. I don't think that they should have an application fee. There must be another way, and I'm just imploring everyone here. And thank you, of course, for helping me with the resolution for my own individual business pursuit. But I just, I want the conversation to happen. I want to be able to get these ordinance looked at because it will affect everyone, and it does affect, and at this point now, while regulations get passed by the state of New Jersey, these things don't apply anymore, and we have to revisit and, you know, help to keep moving forward. So, thank you. And thank you, Colleen, for helping to speak up.
Thanks, Laura.
Christina White at 76 Minutes, please. I would just like to say that we have some ideas about how we would like to see the peddler's license changed, and it doesn't include having no rules at all. It includes having Hybridge businesses, Hybridge organizations, the Borough, having no peddler's permit but perhaps registering the event. However, we don't want no rules at all because we don't want outside people to decide that they're going to park on Main Street and sell coffee without any oversight, you know? We don't want somebody to think that they can set up a craft fair on Main Street that's not going to benefit one of the organizations or the businesses. So, we have to arrange the ordinance so that people who don't live in the Borough or work in the Borough or aren't part of an organization have to jump through the hoops that we're being asked to jump through now. But in order to encourage microbusiness, we need to be able to have things like the farmer's market and some craft fairs. When I organized the craft fair for the 275th anniversary, it was the biggest retail day among all of the restaurants and shops on Main Street that they haven't ever had, you know? And we had like 20 people out there as vendors. It was a wonderful thing for the Borough, you know? We all need to thrive, and we need to be aware of the parameters, and we need to encourage each other, and so that's why we're here. We'd like some encouragement, and we'd like to encourage you as well to help us in that regard. So, thank you.
Can I go?
Can't go 15 Mill Street. On the consent agenda, there's events that are going to be approved, and I know that Steve just got the application for the Easter egg hunt last night. There's no meeting before the Easter egg hunt happens, so I just want to make sure that there's some procedure in place so that we can indeed have an Easter egg hunt.
I may also, we do not have a meeting prior to, I think we do have one. I think there is a time. Depending on the way it is done, if it involves a field use form, after the signatures, that gets, according to ordinance, that gets approved by the clerk, assuming all the signatures are there. Council would then have the opportunity to say they don't like it and vote no on it at that meeting, but it gets approved initially by the clerk if all the paperwork is filed. So, the timeframe would allow it to happen.
Evening. Pablo de Galan, Hickory Circle. I wanted to ask the council for requests regarding the baseball field for the middle school for the upcoming baseball season here that's about to start, I think, in a couple of weeks. The last couple of years, they didn't have a season, two years ago, but last year they did have a season, and the field is kind of falling into disrepair. I do understand that EPW does cut the grass in the soccer fields and the softball fields and whatnot. I think, I'm talking more about the infield of the field that has fallen into disrepair. And I wanted to see if the council would give permission to some of the parents. Some of us have coached baseball now for over eight years now, and many of us are involved still with the league to repair the infield, the pitching mound, the catcher's area, around the bases and whatnot. I know EPW, that's something that's a little bit extra for them to do, and they haven't done it in the last few years. So, that's what I'm asking for, to allow us to have a group of volunteers to come in there and get the infield fixed. They have about three weeks before the season starts, and they'll make it better for the kids, and also when other towns come to play on our field, they feel like it's been maintained. And by the way, it's also named after one of our umpires, actually refs from baseball, I mean, from basketball in the league, Gary Mills. So, I think it's also in his honor, if it's worth to be kept in good shape.
Any other public comments?
I'm just popping in here. My name is Kim Ferrier, Fort One Fairview, and I've been here for about four years. I love Hybridge so much, I'm never leaving. I've just been dipping my toes in. We're starting the Grounds for Art project, and we're really excited about that, and just what it could become, and being part of the community and part of the businesses and visiting all of the businesses here, you know, I've just been talking to them just about, you know, what they have to go through as far as, you know, having a yard sale or a craft sale, or, you know, if there was a future maker event, those types of things. And it felt very different than me starting to learn like what guidelines we would have working under the umbrella of the town as an event. So, I just wanted to just echo my support for the businesses because it's really, really exciting right now to just see how many businesses are coming together and creating these really unique events that, you know, are seasonal and, you know, just really inspiring with, you know, the art and, you know, locally driven. And I just want to make sure that we continue in the direction of success for everybody involved and make it easy and affordable for, you know, those that want to come into town and, you know, sell their wares off a wagon or without. Because it says, I think, in the actual rule that there's a, you can, never mind. There's wagons in the law.
Hello, Theo Christensen, 45 Fairview app. I just wanted to thank the council and Bonnie and Adam for your constant support in my Green Team efforts. I am also here to speak in support of relooking at these ordinances, the field use application, peddler's permit, but taking it more as like a resident. As a resident, it does feel like it's really hard to hold an event, even just like a small, private, family event, to use the ball fields and have like a family birthday party. It's doable. It's just incredibly hindering. And I'd love to see these permits and applications kind of relooked at and seeing how they can benefit our residents, but still kind of like make the rules in place for outsiders coming in. Benefit our residents, please. Benefit the small businesses. I think that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Theo. Anybody else?
Just before we move on, for the HBBA Women's Group people, we have been spending the last two days trying to sort through this. One of the issues is this particular event doesn't fit within of all the other events we've always done in the past. So, you know, sometimes with these things, you don't realize this until you're trying to fit a square into a, or circle into a square hole, or whatever the expression is. So, we're going to take care of you. This event sounds awesome. Nobody's trying to put the kibosh on or make it more diff, we're actually trying to make it easier. Didn't happen for this meeting, but we're still working on it, and I think we're going to call you in for a meeting so we can really pin it down before we bring it back to council.
Then we thank you for that.
Maybe I just, well, I think the biggest thing for me is that I want to make sure that on top of myself getting all, everything I ever wanted, I want everybody else to feel the same. And I know you're working on that.
Every situation's a little different.
Correct, yeah.
But that's, I, let's, you're coming in.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we can move on. All right, on to public hearings. Ordinance 2022-004, amending Chapter 145 Land Use and Development Administration and Procedures Development Applications. Motion to take from the table and open the public hearing for ordinance 2022.
Mayor, before the motion, I just want to note that this was referred to the Planning Board.
Hold on, that's a different one.
A different one?
This one was two, though.
Oh, okay.
This one's consistent.
Oh, okay. That's right.
Planning Board found this was consistent.
Thank you.
I just wanted that noted before, that there's no motion that has to be made with regard to Planning Board's action.
Okay. Right. This is the ordinance that kind of removes the extra layer of the Planning Board experts or professionals. Right. So, it removes an extra layer for people that need to go to, before the Planning Board for variances or whatever.
That should make it easier for people.
Making it easier for people.
Saves some money, also.
Yeah, saves some money. So, motion to take from the table and open the public hearing for ordinance 2022.
Mayor, before the motion, I just want to note that this was referred to the Planning Board.
Hold on, that's a different one.
A different one?
This one was two, though.
Oh, okay.
This one's consistent.
Oh, okay. That's right.
Planning Board found this was consistent.
Thank you.
I just wanted that noted before, that there's no motion that has to be made with regard to Planning Board's action.
Okay. Right. This is the ordinance that kind of removes the extra layer of the Planning Board experts or professionals. Right. So, it removes an extra layer for people that need to go to, before the Planning Board for variances or whatever.
That should make it easier for people.
Making it easier for people.
Saves some money, also.
Yeah, saves some money. So, motion to take from the table and open the public hearing for ordinance 2022-004.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2022-008, amend Chapter 145 Cannabis Retail Business. Before we, do you want to take the floor here on this?
Yeah, just, this was also referred to the Planning Board to consistency with the master plan. Planning Board found that a 1,000-foot buffer was inappropriate and has recommended that it be removed from the ordinance. So, either the ordinance has to be amended to remove the 1,000-foot buffer if you follow the Planning Board's recommendation, or there has to be a resolution rejecting Planning Board's recommendation stating the reason why.
So, as a reminder, everyone got, counsel, a letter from the Planning Board attorney that kind of went into the details of how that meeting transpired. We wanted to put this 1,000-foot buffer in, but what happened was pointed out to us by our planner was that it eliminates all of Main Street, which we can't do because then it looks like we're trying to purposefully keep any type of retail establishment out. We talked about reducing the requirement, whether it's 500 feet or 300 feet, and because the language is very specific, and the ordinance said it can only be in the downtown business on Main Street, that's the only place a retail establishment could be. So, that's restrictive enough. So, the Planning Board recommended that that language just be taken out. So.
If I may, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, so the state doesn't recognize cannabis as an illegal substance anymore, drug. So, therefore, it does not fall in the 1,000-foot rule.
Right.
Would be like alcohol. So, to remove, I think you need to remove the 1,000-foot out of this ordinance, but it still needs to stay in place in the zoning board for other drugs that are illegal.
Well, yeah, we're not changing any of that.
Yeah, I don't think there's any recommendation to change that. It's simply with regard to this new cannabis ordinance that they're saying it's consistent.
So, you're going to take it out of here, not the existing ordinance.
Right.
That's correct. The existing ordinance is not on the table right now. Yeah, that's a good point.
And also, I mean, the language, I mean, it makes, I agree it needs to be amended. The language door-to-door struck me as confusing as well. If you go from the property boundary, which is, I think, the standard way to do the 1,000-foot, it would eliminate all of Main Street, of course, back to the railroad tracks. The door-to-door eliminates an arc from Columbia Trail entrance across to the middle of the road and then curves around. So, it eliminates a portion of the street and not the rest, which seems odd to have a portion of town. So, it definitely makes sense to remove that line from it. Illegal drug sales are already illegal everywhere, and legal ones are already illegal outside of downtown business districts. So, the only houses affected are about five houses. So, yeah, definitely makes sense to remove it, and then that needs to be amended, I guess, and that has to be.
Reintroduced.
Reintroduced, all that, for next time.
Exactly right.
The pitching mound, the catcher's area, the around the bases and whatnot. I know DBW, that's something that's a little bit extra for them to do and they haven't done it in the last few years. So I'm asking for to allow us to have a group of volunteers to come in there and get the infield fixed. They have about three weeks before the season starts and they'll make it better for the kids. And also when other towns come to play on our field, they feel like it's been maintained. And by the way, it's also named after one of our umpires, actually refs from baseball, I mean from basketball in the league, Gary Mills. So I think it's also in his honor if it's worth to be kept in good shape.
I'm just popping in here. My name is Kim Ferrier, Fort One Fairview. And I've been here for about four years. I love Hybridge so much, I'm never leaving. I've just been dipping my toes in. We're starting the Grounds for Art project and we're really excited about that and just what it could become and being part of the community and part of the businesses and visiting all of the businesses here. You know, I've just been talking to them just about, you know, what they have to go through as far as, you know, having a yard sale or a craft sale or, you know, if there was a future maker event, those types of things. And it felt very different than me starting to learn like what guidelines we would have working under the umbrella of the town as an event. So I just wanted to just echo my support for the businesses because it's really, really exciting right now to just see how many businesses are coming together and creating these really unique events that, you know, are seasonal and, you know, just really inspiring with, you know, the art and, you know, locally driven. And I just want to make sure that we continue in the direction of success for everybody involved and make it easy and affordable for, you know, those that want to come into town and, you know, sell their wares off a wagon or without. Because it says, I think, in the actual rule that there's a, you can, nevermind.
Hello, Leah Christensen, 45 Fairview app. I just wanted to thank the council and Bonnie and Adam for your constant support in my Green Team efforts. I am also here to speak in support of relooking at these ordinances, the field use application, peddler's permit, but taking it more as like a resident. As a resident, it does feel like it's really hard to hold an event, even just like a small private family event, to use the ball fields and have like a family birthday party. It's doable. It's just incredibly hindering. And I'd love to see these permits and applications kind of relooked at and seeing how they can benefit our residents, but still kind of like making the rules in place for outsiders coming in. Benefit our residents, please. Benefit the small businesses. I think that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just before we move on, for the HBBA women's group people, we have been spending the last two days trying to sort through this. One of the issues is this particular event doesn't fit within the, of all the other events we've always done in the past. So, you know, sometimes with these things, you don't realize this until you're trying to fit a square into a, or circle into a square hole or whatever the expression is. So we're going to take care of you. This event sounds awesome. Nobody's trying to put the kibosh on or make it more diff-. We're actually trying to make it easier. Didn't happen for this meeting, but we're still working on it. And I think we're going to call you in for a meeting so we can really pin it down before we bring it back to council.
Then we thank you for that.
May I just, well, I think the biggest thing for me is that I want to make sure that on top of myself getting all, everything I ever wanted, I want everybody else to feel the same. And I know you're working on that.
Every situation's a little different. So, but that's, I, let's, you're coming in.
Yeah.
Guys, thank you.
Okay, so I think we can move on. All right, on to public hearings. Ordinance 2022 dash 004, amending chapter 145 land use and development administration procedures, development applications. Motion to take from the table and open the public hearing for ordinance 2022.
May, before the motion, I just wanted to note that this was referred to the planning board.
Hold on, that's a different one.
A different one?
This one was two, though.
This one, this one's consistent.
Oh, okay. That's right. Thank you.
And I just wanted that noted before, that there's no motion that has to be made with regard to the planning board's action.
Right. This is the ordinance that kind of removes the extra layer of the planning board experts or professionals. Right. So it removes an extra layer for people that need to go to, for the planning board for variances or whatever.
That should make it easier for people.
Making it easier for people.
Saves some money also.
Yeah, saves some money. So motion to take from the table and open the public hearing for ordinance 2022 dash 004.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Ferry.
Yes.
Okay, so the public hearing is open. Any public comments or any comments from council?
Sally Wood, Salute To. I think it's a great idea. Anything you can do to make it easier for people, go for it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2022 dash 004.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Ferry.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2022 dash 004.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Ferry.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2022 dash 008, amend chapter 145 cannabis retail business. Before we, do you want to take the floor here on this?
Yeah, just, this was referred to the planning board to consistency with master plan. Planning board found that a 1,000-foot buffer was inappropriate and has recommended that it be removed from the ordinance. So either the ordinance has to be amended to remove the 1,000-foot buffer if you follow the planning board's recommendation, or there has to be a resolution rejecting planning board's recommendation stating the reason why.
So as a reminder, everyone got, counsel, a letter from the planning board attorney that kind of went into the details of how that meeting transpired. We wanted to put this 1,000-foot buffer in, but what happened was pointed out to us by our planner was that it eliminates all of Main Street, which we can't do because then it looks like we're trying to purposefully keep any type of retail establishment out. We talked about reducing the requirement, whether it's 500 feet or 300 feet. And because the language is very specific and the ordinance said it can only be in the business, downtown business owner Main Street, that's the only place a retail establishment could be. So that's restrictive enough. So the planning board recommended that that language just be taken out. So.
If I may, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. So the state doesn't recognize cannabis as an illegal substance anymore, drug. So therefore it does not fall in the 1,000-foot rule.
Right.
Would be like alcohol. So to remove, I think you need to remove the 1,000-foot out of this ordinance, but it still needs to stay in place in the zoning board for other drugs that are illegal.
Well, yeah, we're not changing any of that.
Yeah, I don't think there's any recommendation to change that. It's simply with regard to this new cannabis ordinance that they're saying it's inconsistent.
So you're going to take it out of here, not the existing ordinance.
Right.
That's correct. The existing ordinance is not on the table right now. Yeah, that's a good point.
And also, I mean, the language, I mean, it makes, I agree it needs to be amended. The language door-to-door struck me as confusing as well. If you go from the property boundary, which is, I think, the standard way to do the 1,000-foot, it would eliminate all of Main Street, of course, back to the railroad tracks. The door-to-door eliminates an arc from Columbia Trail entrance across to the middle of the road and then curves around. And, you know, so it eliminates a portion of the street and not the rest, which seems odd to have a portion of town. So it definitely makes sense to remove that line from it. Illegal drug sales are already illegal everywhere and legal ones are already illegal outside of downtown business district. So the only houses affected are about five houses. So, yeah, definitely it makes sense to remove it. And then that needs to be amended, I guess, and then has to be.
Reintroduced.
Reintroduced, all that, for next time.
Exactly right.
Makes sense.
All right, great. Any other?
I'm sorry. I was going to say, you know, you need a motion, really. Somebody wants to make a motion and second it, finalize the discussion and vote.
So a motion to approve the recommendation.
Correct. And amend the ordinance to incorporate the recommendation.
Make a motion to remove that provision C from section eight of this ordinance.
I second that.
Roll call.
Unless there's any further discussions.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to cut it off.
Okay.
That's a good one, I did.
Oh, yeah.
This is public discussion, right?
We didn't open the public hearing yet.
Yeah.
So we have.
I'm not entirely in agreement that we should absolutely remove it. I think reducing the distance, 500 feet, 750 feet, is more applicable or a better solution than taking out entirely. Just my opinion. I agree with Steve's recommendation that door-to-door is an ambiguous statement and that property line to property line would be a better way to measure distance. I'm not in favor of entirely eradicating that particular sentence regardless of the recommendation of the attorney. I'd rather have a set distance.
And I'm also just concerned about the area where you go into Commons Park. There's a house there that could potentially be anything. Right now it's just there. But, but I don't think that would be a place to have this type of retail as people come in and out of the Columbia Trail from all over. And that's what the first thing they would see. I would not want to see that as a retail spot.
Well, the problem is we can't, we can't cut out pieces of business zone.
But I read somewhere you could, how many feet from a park? And that's a park. We can't name that particular park and how many feet from that park?
Not per our planner. It becomes too ambiguous that we're just trying to, you know, spot zone essentially, eliminate certain spots.
Well, if we had a specific distance, it might eliminate that.
We went through all of this. There was much discussion. So, I mean, again, that's where we came to and you can read it in this letter. After much discussion, we talked about the 500 feet, we talked about the 1,000 feet. Ultimately, this just small slice of Main Street, which is also a county road, zoned for business that it would work there. You know, and it's open to any place, really, but we are only allowing one license. So kind of first come, first served.
Well, and I think that, I mean, like I said, when I sat down and looked at the map, 1,000 feet from the property line eliminated all of downtown business. That's one option. 1,000 feet from the, let's say it's the front door of the middle school. The elementary school is far enough away that it doesn't actually touch the downtown business district at all, so it has no impact. But the middle school front door, like I said, if you make a circle, the arc goes from the place where the Columbia Trail hits Main Street on Christina Whitehead's side of the road. Arcs out into the middle and touches the yellow line in front of the dental place. So it curves out and then it begins to curve back the other way, goes through the center of the building at the corner of, what is it?
Pennsylville or McDonald.
McDonald and Main Street, right through that, and then skips through the backyard of the building next to the parking lot and clips the corner of that next property and continues on in its giant circle. That little arc is the only thing that would be affected because everything outside of it, you can't have it anyway because it's not downtown business. So it just affects, I think it was five houses. Which, which it's, it's just, once again, that doesn't seem reasonable to deal with half of the town and not, you know, the only place that it is.
But then that would put my corner by the commons and eliminate that.
Outside, no, that would be outside of the 1,000 feet. So that would be fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, in fact, the first house it would be in would be the house Pablo's next to the trail. The next one would be Christina, the one next to that, and on down that side of the street. And the next, the final one that would be eliminated would be what is now the greengrocer if you go by the building opposed to the front door. So, I mean, it's a very, it's kind of arbitrary.
Yeah, she kind of also talked about the door-to-door, that it.
Saying downtown business is just this spot. That's very clear. And as long as we don't change our downtown business district to be a different thing, it's very clear. And it just seems, it just makes more sense logically, at least to me. But once again, it doesn't mean.
Are you going to open up comments before you make the amendment? But I think there's things.
No, actually, Pop, the, if, one way or the other, there will be a public hearing on this.
Correct.
Whether it's going to be tonight or it's going to be at the next meeting. So that'll be the time for you to speak, okay?
So the public hearing today is not public then?
We didn't open it yet.
It's not open yet.
That's what I mean. Can you open it so we could have a discussion?
The answer is no. We're going to decide whether or not to amend it first. Because if it gets amended, then the public hearing will be at the next meeting. If it's not amended, the public hearing likely will be tonight.
So I think we do have a motion on the table.
Yes, we do. So we had it from Strange and Ferry. Yeah. A motion to amend this ordinance by, according to the.
Approve the recommendations of the planning board.
And to remove that particular segment from those conditions, C, the number or letter.
So can I get a roll call? Yeah.
Sure.
Graham.
Yeah.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
No.
Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Ferry.
Yes.
So now we have to change it. So we probably just vote no on this current ordinance. Is that correct?
Well, no, the motion was to amend the ordinance. So now the ordinance has been amended. And so now you put it off because there's a substantial change to the ordinance. And you have to now republish it so that people know about this change and they can come to the next meeting and speak about the ordinance as it's been amended at the next meeting.
Okay. So open the public hearing?
No, don't open it. Don't open it. Don't open it.
Okay, okay.
The whole public hearing next time, when everybody knows what the amendment is and what it is they're discussing.
So there's no vote on this one?
Correct. The vote would be, actually, no, there's no vote because you have to put it off.
Well, and so does this now have to be introduced at the next meeting?
Yep.
This is considered the introduction.
Okay, and that would be.
And so that's why you can have the hearing at the next meeting.
Got it.
I'm sorry. The recommendation that was read from the planning board is not what I voted in the planning board to recommend. So that's why I wanted to discuss it today.
Well, that's not true, Pablo.
And then explain, next time when you meet.
You did vote for this.
It's actually not the recommendation.
This is not, it's not a public hearing. I'm sorry. If your comments about what the attorney wrote to the council, you should have contacted the attorney for the planning board. We have to act upon what we were told was done at the planning board. So, you know, this is not a time for you to comment. You should have contacted the planning board attorney if what he wrote isn't correct.
Did they send that letter to us before?
You did vote for this, though.
No, I didn't vote for removing the 1,000 feet.
Yeah.
Different, no, but the question, the letter that you're talking about, Barry, was that sent to the planning board from the attorney saying what they actually submitted to the council? Because I didn't see that.
I'm assuming so. Well, it was part of this public.
It says, "A C seat to Barbara Kinsey, Stephen Dine, Darlene Green, and me."
But that's not, Pablo got it, who's a part of the planning board members, who voted.
You know what? This is not something we can argue about at this point. If you have a problem with what your attorney did to the planning board, you have to talk to him.
Okay, on to ordinance 2022 dash 009, open container and public consumption of alcohol. Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022 dash 009.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Ferry.
Yes.
Let me take this, just pick it up. It's funny, you want to just, it's really just to allow public consumption of alcohol at certain borough events. Being concerts and maybe Salute To House events or, you know, other.
And they would be designated by council, which events they would create things like that, so.
Right. So concerts, now everyone can be legal.
Well, I think it's important to understand it's not just always, it provides a mechanism by which council can say, this is a space, and just, and then do that for chosen events.
Right.
Yeah, council will still maintain control over that. I mean, that's.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
Right. Important to make that clarification for that.
We don't have anything on the docket right now, but. Any public comments on that ordinance?
Sally Wood, Salute To. Another great idea. No more of those brown paper bags I saw trotting around. Take good care. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Bonner, Savannah and Creher. I read through the ordinance. I just wanted to understand, the public consumption or open container would mean that there's a designated area or does that mean all of Main Street during a designated event?
Just, well, what we had discussed around this specifically was like the Hybridge concerts that we sponsor? Or we manage, I guess?
I don't know.
Yeah. If somebody wanted to bring a, you know, their own takeaway drink, they could.
But couldn't anybody come to council and say, I'd like to get council approval?
Yeah.
We could, so it's not limited to that. It just has to go through the process of being approved by council.
In the past, anybody or any event, quite frankly, could come to council and request this thing, but it was done on a.
Case by.
It's case by case. Oh, what's the area? What's the situation? Whatever.
But this doesn't include the ABC. This only includes the council.
No, no, this is not, no.
Because.
Well, an ABC permit.
But only borough events, so not anyone can come to council.
Um, no, I think that.
You could.
But borough events are different.
No, but so, so the fire department, they do their thing and they come here and let us know what they're doing and it gets approved.
Well, yeah, I mean, what it says is.
Of course.
It allows the council to approve an open container area on a certain date.
So like a smoking area. It wouldn't be all of, so say for instance, and obviously this doesn't necessarily mean this event. Say Soapbox Derby wasn't a borough event and we decided to do open container on that specific day. That would then mean that there is a small designated portion of places set by a business plan, set by the parameters of what the council governs, based on where someone can drink with their own containers from home or a bar, a tavern.
So.
I'm just trying to understand it because it was a little bit confusing.
Soapbox Derby might be a little bit complicated because I'm not sure we would ever do.
It's not just Soapbox Derby.
But I, again, we, we were talking about concerts, which really how it came up and certain events that are.
But I mean, we do mimosas for Soapbox Derby if we want to be really honest. Everyone comes to Forge Tavern or they've come to Mrs. Riley's for mimosas. That's an open container. I'm just saying, I've been really clear with ordinances in the past. If it, if it's an ordinance, it needs to be clear. And I think that's the problem I've been having is that I'm governed heavily, heavily by the ABC. And if this isn't clearly stated here, it shouldn't be passed. And that's kind of what I'm looking at here. I would love open containers as long as they stay in the business district and they're not on residential property. I don't think having cans and bottles and I've got to pick them up in front of the bar anyway. So I think it needs to be looked at. It needs to be clearly stated. It needs to encapsulate absolutely every single scenario there. Because coming to the council every single time and having everybody vote, it just doesn't seem to be working. So that's my standpoint and I'll leave that to you guys. Thank you.
It would have to be individually determined because otherwise you have an open blanket for anybody going anywhere on Main Street any time of day.
That's what I'm saying.
So this is saying that you would have to come to council to get approval for a specific event, a specific time, and a specific area.
But I'm asking and I'm saying, I'm getting borough events, anyone's event, open containers, designated area. If we don't understand it, then how are we passing the ordinance?
It's a sanctioned event. So anything sanctioned by council as a designated event that can have an open container would be eligible.
Right. And, I mean, I think that, as I said, at any point in the past, if Joe Smith wanted to have a party on the baseball field number three, they could say, can you allow us to do this? And then the council could do that. Okay, we're going to, this simply says, we've created a term, open container area. And by voting yes, we're going to have an open container area here. What that means is already denoted. We don't have to say it each time and write it. If we're going to do it in this area, this is, we've created that definition, an area that we've approved and it means this, and it simply sets up the parameters to do that. But it still has to be done, as always, on a case-by-case basis because we have a town-wide prohibition, if you will, on open containers off of, outside of a premises that's allowed to serve or in private property or in your own yard. So you can't generally walk down the street because it's not an open container area.
So the only difference.
This provides a mechanism to create one that's simple, just simpler is all.
So the, forgive me for being argumentative. I don't mean to be. I just want to understand. This obviously applies to me. So the only difference is that instead of going to the ABC and requiring a permit for such an event, we're now allowing it to be a separate portion of it?
I want to be clear because when we talk about ABC, it's totally different. So, and that would be outside, because it's a borough-sponsored event, we get certain exemptions from those things. So, you know, we could certainly have additional conversations about this, but I think this is the best we can do for the time being with what we were thinking we wanted to accomplish for borough-sponsored events.
I will say that an ABC permit.
And Chief Barton's here if you wanted to.
As an example, as an example, a social affairs permit permits a group to serve alcoholic beverages to people. If you have an open container area at the park in a, I don't know, under a tent or something, that simply means individuals can bring and drink what they bring themselves. They cannot give it and share it. You know, there's always a gray area, you know, me and my wife, and I bring it with me and I give it to her. Okay, that, most people would say that's not really serving the public. I'm just sharing with my wife. But there is obviously a little gray line, you know, when do you draw the line? But the basic idea is that if I'm buying a big pile of stuff and giving it to people, I'm serving it, whether I charge or not. That requires an ABC, some type of permit, a social affairs permit for a social group or other types. People randomly showing up and drinking their own thing that they brought with them is not, does not require an ABC permit. But you're not allowed to do it in our town because you're not allowed to have an open container. This is just simply creating the framework to say on one period of time that open container prohibition is waived for this little area. So if people want to show up and have a drink while they watch a concert in this, they can. It's just, it was, we could always do that, but we had, this just provides a simple framework. Okay, here's where we can point to. Yes, we're allowed to do it. Here it goes. It doesn't change the ABC requirements because we don't have the authority to do that.
No, that wasn't my question. I think you, for the most part, everyone answered it. I just wanted to make sure that the verbiage on that stated that it was a restricted area or, so I think that was my answer.
And it doesn't eliminate the general prohibition against open containers wandering about town. It doesn't eliminate that at all.
There was a gray area with COVID, I think, with being able to sell drinks to go. That, I, I don't know that there's any plan to eliminate that, but, I mean, it's, I think that was kind of a gray area.
Well, we do our best to protect the community in what we're doing. So if we give a closed container and we assume they're going home, but they're out, you know, there's not much more we can do at that point. It's just an educational arm or that I'm introducing into the community. Thank you. Because I'm on the events committee, is there, is there going to be something in the, like the concert forum, the events forums or something that'll say we want to, so that, so that council will know, like when they're approving concert dates, it'll be like, okay, this is going to be a beer event and, you know, movies not going to be a beer event.
I mean, you could, you could request that in the, in the approval of your event, yeah. Yeah. In fact, that probably ought to, at that point now, it might, would make sense to add that to a field use forum. Do you, are you requesting this? And if so, for what specific area? Because council would then have to do that. It wouldn't, that couldn't be approved by the clerk, just a write-off.
Anybody else? Good. Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2022 dash 009.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Ferry.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2022 dash 009.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Ferry.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2022 dash 010, cap bank. Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022 dash 010.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Ferry.
Yes.
I think we hammered this one home pretty good last meeting, but if anyone has any questions, something to add, any comments from the public? Okay, motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2022 dash 010.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2022-010.
Move.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yes.
Okay, on to the consent agenda. Want to need to pull anything out of there?
Uh, I'd like to pull 97, oh, 97 to 2022 for discussion.
Anybody else? Okay, motion to approve resolution, oh, sorry, let's pull resolution 097-2022 out for discussion.
Move.
Motion.
Oh, yes, motion. Pull 97-221.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yes.
Hey, Steve?
Oh, okay, I thought we were going to approve the rest, but okay.
You know, I try to keep these orders...
The, um, skip ahead, 59. I was simply going to make a motion to, I'm looking at the, to, this is the list of people doing the various social media sites, and the events committee folks have requested that for the concert series that, I mean, I, they didn't, they did not, not want me, but they, they wanted to continue to have Lynn Copeland on there because she's been helping Sal Vassalino with that process. She's also the chair of the events committee, and they felt it made sense for her to be able to be there with him. If that means I have to be removed, because there's, if we have to only have two, that's fine, but, I mean, I was going to ask that we add Lynn Copeland, amend this to include Lynn Copeland on the summer concert series Facebook to help Sal Vassalino with, with that, with that, updating the pages and such.
We did want to try to have a council liaison on these pages, where, you know, as much as possible.
Right.
Does Sal really want to be the social media page or have...
Yeah, that's, I, I'll...
But I don't think we're limited, are we? We're not, we don't have to go to...
Can you have three?
I mean, if we can't have three, and I didn't know whether we, we had a policy that said only two, then I, I, I've got the sense Sal wouldn't be terribly upset about being removed. But on the other hand, if we can have three, it might make more sense to have, to have Lynn and him.
I don't think there's a limit, but there should be someone on the council.
Oh, you don't want to have a lot?
Yeah.
I'll promise I won't do a lot of work on it. I've got enough other websites I may take.
I mean, I personally don't have any issue. So, can we just amend that?
Well, I made a motion, so it's...
I'm not really with that particular one. I presume it's not limited to two based upon discussion.
Yeah.
I just asked Bonnie about it, so, you know, why, why don't you amend it to add this other person, subject to, Bonnie, looking at the audience, the ordinance to make sure that that doesn't create a problem. But if it doesn't create a problem, then you have three people. That's all.
I don't think there's going to be any issue there.
Okay, so then I second to amend.
Okay, roll call.
All right, Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Okay, motion to approve consent agenda 087.
Actually, we, we still have to do, vote on approving 97, package 2022 amendment.
Well, we could approve all of them now.
Can I, yeah, it doesn't matter.
But then you need a motion to put back on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve resolution 097-2022. As amended. Roll call.
All right, Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve consent agenda 087 through 096-2022.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yes.
Okay, on to the second round of public comment. It's the policy of the Borough Council that all public comments on an issue shall be limited to one minute per person. Each person may speak once during the public comment section. No debating, I read all this, no debated grounds, one more minute per person.
Mayor, before, I don't want somebody to have to use their public comment time if they want to speak, but two people just approached me about a resolution 98-2022, and saying that the townwide yard sale is not May 21 with May 22 rain date, it's rain or shine event, it's a two-day event. And so, the resolution was improperly worded, I don't know if that's the case, but certainly if it is, I'd suggest that you go back and, you know, amend this resolution and re-vote on it, if that's the case, if it's a two-day event.
Yeah, it's a date's wrong, let's amend, what was the number, the...
0922.
98 hyphen 2022.
We don't have that on.
Oh, 097?
Yeah.
09.
That's, I've just handled my idea.
098.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I have it on here.
I'm sorry.
We printed it on, though.
Yeah, we had to read that one.
Oh, it's 89, so, on the resolution, backwards, it's 89, not 88, okay.
It's not, this is not confusing at all, Frank.
It's just a typo.
Yeah, so, it's just a typo, so...
So, it's 089.
089, raise the resolution, that's that issue.
Updated borough events.
Correct.
Okay.
Fix the date.
One, one day event with a rain date.
Yes.
It's rain or shine, both dates.
Two-day event.
It's a two-day event.
Just confirm those dates again.
That's what it says.
May 21st and May 22nd.
That's what it says.
Saturday and Sunday.
So, it doesn't say rain date.
In the supporting documents, that's what it says.
You know, you know what it is, Mayor? I think we, we solved it, Bonnie solved it. Apparently, originally, it was done as 98 and it said a rain date. And apparently, when it then was made into resolution 89, the rain date issue was eliminated. And so, the resolution, I haven't pulled it out yet, because I just was looking at what they handled.
There is no resolution issue.
There, there, there apparently is no issue with those passes. But I appreciate, just wanting to get it out to make sure that it's done right.
Rain or shine, May 21st and 22nd.
Both dates, yes.
Okay. Does anyone just want to raise their hand to make sure we're all...
Keeping everybody on their toes.
Yeah. Okay, second round of public comments, one minute per person.
Sally Ward from Solitude. Today, I was on Main Street, and I saw that the new store, The Green Grocer, has a little note on the door, and the note reads, "Hey, neighbors, we are having a soft opening on Friday, the 18th, that would be tomorrow. We will have produce, dairy, eggs, snacks, and more. See you then." There's a heart, and it says Chelsea and crew. And I believe they open at 10:00 in the morning, so, that's cool.
Any other public comment?
Well, if we're, Christina wanted 76 main. If we're giving official shout-outs, I'd like to shout out to the Yard Tacos, which opened on Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. I hope you all get a chance to go there. They're open from noon until typically 9:00 o'clock, and it's great food, and it's a great atmosphere, and it's a wonderful addition to the town. And we'll have more additions to the town in the next couple of months, so, we're rolling. Yes?
Father of the other nine Hickory Circle, I just wanted to mention to the board, I know we didn't have the opportunity to talk to about the cannabis ordinance and the open, in the public comments, I don't got a minute, so I won't, I won't be long, but I, I just want to voice that that meeting, for anybody who wants to go and take a look at the video, went on forever because of the point Ms. Hughes was mentioning earlier. We were trying to find a way to amend the, the ordinance such a way that it did not restrict the entire, the entirety of Main Street, but address some of the issues regarding the distance to the school. And there was a workable solution that was identified. We never narrowed down the distance because somebody had to go and officially do it, but we did agree, and I voted for, just for the record here, because I, I want to check the notes on the minutes and verify. What I voted for was a change to the, to the distance such that from the elementary school corner, at a certain distance, it would eliminate the entirety of the commons area, the, the Columbia Trail, which eliminated the properties in front of the area there. So, I just want to let that go because if you're going to amend the ordinance to remove it altogether, it's not in line with what we agreed.
Any other public comments? Okay, legal issues?
Nothing, thank you.
Communications, Adam.
We have the February zoning report, no appearing during proposed increasing municipal solid waste tipping fee. Looking over it, few this time, plenty more consistent review letters for C and D, learning counting mosquito and black fly pesticide control letters, and the utility interest moratorium ending March 15th in English and Spanish.
On to the bill list.
We have a total of $512,591.22.
Before we adjourn, I do want to echo what you just said, we have awesome things happening on Main Street.
We'll approve the bill list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to... I'm way off today. I don't know what happened. Motion to approve the bill list.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
We have awesome things happening on Main Street right now. It is really exciting. Congratulations on the taco place, the Green Grocer's coming up, bike shops, I mean, hopefully someday, bike shop and, you know, another bike shop on 77. I don't know what's happening there, but good stuff happening, great energy here tonight, and I want to thank everyone for a really good meeting. So, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Sorry, who was my...
I thought you said...
All right, so I have Strange and Fair.
I gotta be louder.
Uh, roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yes.
Thank you.